All right, it is 6:30. We'll go ahead and get started with the zoning board meeting for the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board. Could we go ahead and do roll call for quorum?
Kelly Rast is not present. Dan Foyle is not present. John Lloyd is not present. Ken Klingensmith?
Present.
Fred Wingert on Zoom?
Present.
Dennis Bowlen?
Present.
And Emily Coleman?
Present.
We have a quorum of four.
Right, if we can, would you mind reading the, since we are both present and on Zoom, if you can read us the statement for the hybrid in-person virtual meeting?
Sure. This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. This meeting is being held in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. For Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble, please call 913-715-1700. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click Raise Hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing *9. Please do not utilize the raise hand function until the start of the agenda item about which you desire to comment. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. The chairman may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or other points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. There will be a 10 seconds remaining warning sound. For board members and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking so that the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. Looking at the agendas, are there any comments to add, delete, or revise items that are on the agenda this evening? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Emily Coleman, I motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Dennis Bowlen, I'll second.
Anyone opposed? Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Do we have any disclosure of conflicts of interest related to the agenda items that are on our, that are in front of us tonight?
No.
Hearing none, I'll continue to see if there are any disclosure of external contacts or discussions. Hearing none, I'll move to the approval of the minutes from the February 1st, 2023 zoning board meeting that, of everyone received in their packet.
Emily?
Dennis Bowlen, I'll make the motion to approve.
Emily Coleman, I second.
Anyone opposed to further discussion related to the minutes? Hearing none, we'll have the minutes approved for February 1st, 2023. Board reports or any actions of the Board of County Commissioners or the Planning Commission?
Michelle Lineiger, County Planning Staff. We had some actions take place for the three items that were on the Southeast Zoning Board's January 4th agenda. Those were Mount Auburn, Second Platte, States at Shadow Run, and Bell Farm. Those all went to the February 2nd Board of County Commissioners meeting, and all were approved. There were no applications on last month's agenda, so those, there's nothing to report for that.
Thank you. Any questions from the board or discussion? All right, moving along. I'm, go ahead, please.
Jay Leipzig, Planning Department. Just to give you a quick update on the Planning Commission, just to let you know, they did meet yesterday evening, and they, there are several things on their agenda. They approved new bylaws in accordance with the recent changes made by the Board of County Commissioners. They also, we provided an update on the New Century Air Center and Executive Airport compatibility plans. We're having a report out to the Planning Commission at the April 25th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. They also, we provided an update on the Sunflower Army Ammunition Conceptual Land Use Plan Update as well. And we have a public meeting that is scheduled for March 21st, 2023 over at the Timberage Center that evening. And then there's also a public hearing on that item before the Planning Commission on April 25th. We also have our draft regulations for accessory structures. It'll be before the Planning Commission at their next public hearing, which is scheduled for March 28th. And that will affect the case this evening, or you'll, we'll reference that in further detail here shortly.
Thank you, Jay. I appreciate that. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay.
All right, we can go ahead and move forward. We're going to introduce the applicant for conditional use permit of an oversized accessory building on 5.5 acres. This is application SE23-271CUPAU, and I'll go ahead and let staff present and provide that report.
Good evening, Michelle Lineiger, Planning Staff. This application is for an oversized accessory building. This visiting map shows the location, the parcel that's outlined in blue. It's north and east of the intersection of Flum and 199th Street. Here is a closer aerial of the property, which is 5.5 acres in size. And then I've noted the general proposed location of the, of the new building, which is proposed to be 2,200 square feet, which is a 40 by 55 building. The property is permitted up to 2,250 square feet of accessory building total on site. The property currently has two accessory buildings. One falls under the exempt category. Other one is 320 square feet, which is part of the total of what is permitted. And when you combine those two sizes, the amount of accessory building on site that is proposed is 270 square feet over what is permitted. The EPK is aware of the pending text amendment for the accessory building, but has declined to proceed, has decided to proceed under the current regulations due to the unknown timeframe or timeline for the text amendment. The proposed accessory building would be permitted by right under the currently proposed regulations, though. This is a zoning map of the area. The little neighborhood that this property is in is all zone RN1, which is a residential neighborhood district. The surrounding area is zone rural. Most of the area is a mix of different sized residential parcels with houses and accessory buildings. Staff has made some findings on this proposed conditional use permit. Would be consistent with the zoning and uses of the nearby properties, compatible with those characters, with the character of the neighborhood, would not be detrimental to the nearby parcels should the CUP be approved. The request is consistent with the county's plan recommendation to allow uses that are complementary to existing residential development. Staff does recommend approval of the oversized accessory building, subject to the stipulations, including a 10-year timeframe outlined in the staff report. And just to add a caveat into that, once the text amendment changes have gone through the process, if they are approved as proposed, at the point of the expiration of the CUP, if it's approved, then the applicant would be, would not be required to renew any sort of process that they would fall under that new regulations. Here's a suggested motion, and I can answer any questions, and the applicant is also here if there's any questions.
Zoning board members have any questions of staff related to the application?
Emily Coleman, so the new regulations, is my understanding that they'll potentially allow for this kind of building without a conditional use permit? Is that?
Yes. And I've, I'm the one who's actually working on the text amendment, so I probably have the best knowledge of it. What the direction of the Planning Commission has been is to increase what is permitted on site, 87% increase over what is permitted today. We are proposing a process to allow for changes from that. If you want something bigger, if you want it in your front yard, similar to what is out there today. Except the process that is proposed is mirrored after our accessory dwelling unit permit. So it's, it's the same process as a conditional use permit. It just does not have a expiration.
Emily Coleman, what is the perceived timeline on that adoption?
It, it is published for a public hearing at the Planning Commission on the 28th of March, and then we would anticipate action on that by the Planning Commission. They did get a presentation in January, January? No. Early December on the draft text, didn't have any proposed changes, so we would, we would estimate that they would move it forward this month to the Board of County Commissioners. So, April?
Hopefully, Jay Leipzig, hopefully it'd be the second meeting in April, we believe.
Everything is approved, as Michelle said. That's the timeframe. Ken Klingensmith, I don't want to get too much off topic, but would that, would that text change then any conditional use permit that's in place now that would keep those residents and homeowners from having to go through a conditional use process again? Is that kind of the intent?
Yes. And we have, that I don't have on the top of my head. I have a spreadsheet of all of them that we have approved. There's, there's a handful that then, once their CUP expires, they then would have to get that accessory building use permit, is what we're calling it. Everybody else would just fall within the permitted regulations at that point. So their CUP would go away, and they would be permitted by right. But there's a handful that are, would still need that approval.
I'm glad to see the Planning Commission take that, those steps forward with making that happen so that residents don't have to keep going through this process, which includes an expense to the process.
We're, we're excited about it also.
Any other questions from zoning board? Fred, I know you're on Zoom. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, this is Fred Wingert. Michelle, any, I didn't see anything from neighbors. Did the neighbors have any comments?
I have not talked to anybody or received any comments regarding this application.
Thank you.
All right, without anything further, as the applicant, I think the applicant is present. Would you like to say a few words or have anything you'd like to add to the staff's report?
Kevin Trug. My name is Kevin Trug. Basically, I appreciate the effort that Michelle has put forth. Primarily, this property, this house, I'm going to live there forever. The storage building itself is literally a dream that I've wanted for the, you know, most of my life. Bottom line, I have, I've inherited classic cars, and I would like to store the cars inside this shelter. But more importantly, besides that, my youngest daughter is getting scheduled to get married in June, and that's why I want to start the construction, because that's the venue that I want to, you know, I just think it would be too cool. Like, anyway, that's primarily.
Perfect. Zoning board have any questions to the applicant?
None.
Hearing none, then thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight. And the word she said, we'll go ahead and open up to public comments. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this application? Or please, I saw you in the back. Can you come up to the podium? And if you can, for the record, if you can state your name and address?
Dennis Bowlen, 19870 South Clearview Road. Were his neighbors, we haven't met yet. When he said classic cars, he's got my vote.
Are there any, is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section. And any further discussion amongst the zoning board? If not, I'll go ahead and take a suggestion or a motion possibly?
Mr. Chairman, it's Fred Wingert. I recommend approval of conditional use permit for the construction of a 40 by 55-foot accessory structure with subject property of 19740 Clearview Road with the stipulations and for the reasons outlined in the staff report.
Emily Coleman, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Hearing no objections, this will then go ahead and be moved forward to the Board of County Commissioners at which meeting?
This is Michelle Lineiger. It will go before the Board of County Commissioners at their March 30th meeting to be held at 9:30 a.m. at the County Administration Building located, well, in this room, located at 111 South Cherry Street here in Olathe.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, thank you, everyone who participated in, for being here this evening. Other business, before the board, we do have zoning board bylaws that we're going to talk about. And Jay, would you go ahead and lead, lead us the charge on there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Leipzig, the Planning Department. I wanted to introduce Peg Trent, who's our chief legal counsel with the county. You might recall, we had a discussion at our February meeting, the draft bylaws, and with some text changes and amendments to that document. And so Peg is here this evening to walk through that additional, that document with you this evening. We also have some additional things, I believe she's going to cover this evening as well.
Thanks, Jay.
Yep.
Peg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. And so I wanted to start out by reporting back to you. From our last meeting and review of the bylaws, if I recall at that time, we were still waiting for the finalization of a certain items from the board before moving forward with any revisions to your, or not revisions, or moving forward with the bylaws. And some other outstanding questions that were raised by board members. So subsequent to our last meeting, the Board of County Commissioners did convene in a committee of the whole, which was held on February 9th, and then on February 16th, adopted the Code of Ethics for the board. And those ethics now apply to them as elected officials, as well as to you as appointed board members. They removed the employees, which anyway wouldn't have been held in that manner, and now they're being applied, the employees, through the employee handbook. But before I go into the Code of Ethics and the bylaws, I wanted to respond to some questions that were brought up as we had some discussions. And one of them was jurisdiction, if you recall. There was a discussion, it was brought up, if I, and help me, Jay, if I got this right, I thought, if I'm having this right, there was a question, because we've been, we've been going through all the zoning boards and planning, so I'm trying to make sure I have the correct questions. You had brought up about why it did not include one of the townships in the jurisdiction. And when you were provided at the last meeting a copy of the resolution that consolidated you, and if I recall, the year was 2007?
Yes, 2017.
17. There it is, right in front of me, and I didn't even know it. There was a question about why one of the townships was omitted in the resolution. So Sean Penley and staff from Jay's office pulled some documents, and I believe those were emailed out to you yesterday, I believe. And I want to take a moment and go through that, because basically from the background, it indicates that, in my opinion, it looks like maybe it should have been included in the jurisdiction. So I want to appreciate that that was brought out by the board. We're going to have to bring a resolution back to the commissioners. So when the bylaws come forward, we'll have to clarify that at that time with the jurisdiction. Another cleanup, I want to make sure while I'm in there, is that we put the accurate number of board members, because it gave a range versus an actual definitive number. When you're defining quorums, you need to have that identified in the resolution. The other issue, if I recall, that was, I was tasked with, is that you wanted assurance that the, since your jurisdiction lies within District, is it 3, for Commissioner O'Hara, you wanted assurance from me that it would be appointed by Commissioner O'Hara. Just so you know, I did follow up with that at a meeting when they were going through the rules of order. I think it was the rules, yeah, rules of order, and had even prepared a motion for Commissioner O'Hara to read into the record, which she did request, and it was voted down. And the reason that they voted down, we did it in general, that, that planning and zoning boards would be the jurisdiction of those unincorporated areas. So that would apply also to Commissioner Allenbrand in District 6, too, as well. The reason it was voted down is I was tasked during, and I think I told you during the committee of the whole, that they had held, that I was to come back with a plan. They repealed this resolution that was incorrect. They were not applying it the way that it was, that it was written. It was always been that the commissioner who, that's the district that they're elected, were appointing those board membership. However, the resolution said something different. It was to be divided equally among all the board members of the commission. So when the subcommittee was reviewing, they recognized that there is an issue that needs to be corrected. So I was tasked with coming back to the board with a plan, laying it all out so that they can see, you know, what, how to move forward. The commission did not want to, they felt that was premature to vote on that motion for planning and zoning boards until there was a report back. So that was not approved at this point. So what I had assured the Board of County Commissioners, and I said, and I assured this board, but I think you wanted something more affirmative, was that we would, we are not changing that practice. It will continue to be until we, you know, what we've been doing, which wasn't in rules or anything anyway, until we have an opportunity to report back and the commissioners make a decision on how those appointments would occur. So with that said, I wanted you to know that I do not have anything definitive to provide you as it relates to that, and it would not be the proper to put in the resolution. Only Commissioner O'Hare can appoint to this board, because it's a more broader issue with all of the other boards, too. And it's not just the Planning Commission, it's other boards that are outside of the planning and zoning, too, that are not correct either. Doesn't mean, it doesn't, in my mind, Commissioner O'Hare and Allenbrand make nominations, and then the board approves it on the consent. So to me, their legal appointments, it's just who's nominating is where the, the issue is at this time. So with that said, I just wanted to report back on those three main issues. I think those were some of the carryover. But I wanted to go, before we get back into the bylaws, just go over high level what changed in the Code of Ethics, and then that shows some of the revisions now I've made in the bylaws as a result of those changes. So are there any questions over those three items I'm reporting out on at this point?
Peg, Jay Leipzig, just a quick question to clarify. So, so the nomination process that we've been doing previously will continue?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, no questions. I will continue then with the Code of Ethics that was adopted on February 16th. So the original Code of Ethics was adopted in 1988. This was a revision that just came 34 years later. And as a result of it, when the commissioners and the subcommittee went through, they had determined, and this is a seven-page document that was emailed out to you, and I think you have a copy as well. In the particular document, it's the same standards that were in the original. It's just been cleaned up grammatically, formatted differently. So everything up until page 3 are basically the same of what was in the original, just cleaned up with language. It's the same 12 standards of what is Code of Ethics that we have been talking. I think you attended a training in October, a board training, and then it's just the same what we had in the past. The main changes were just clearing up process and what is the definition of conflict of interest. So general intent was for you, if there is a ethic question, you can go to, and I'm not sure if we have online tonight, Ryan Haga or Bob Ford, they both are on. So those are the attorneys that are assigned to planning and zoning boards. They will be your assigned attorneys, and if you ever have a question of whether you have a conflict of interest, that you can reach out to them, and they would be able to answer. If you rely on their advice, then, you know, you aren't in violation of the ethic policy. If you disagree with their advice, and they find that there's an ethic violation, the process now is that it will go to the Board of County Commissioners. This is all confidential. And the Board of County Commissioners can ask for a second opinion, an outside attorney opinion, then our office. It can also, at this point, have you presenting anything that you want to the county commissioners? And then it's the same sanctions that's before. They can say, hey, there's no violation. They can say, hey, don't do it again. They have a litany of things that they can do. Another item that has now changed, gift and gratuities. I'm not going to go into it, because I'm not sure you're getting many gifts and gratuities as board members, but if you do, these are pretty much in line with the state statute now. So it's pretty, if in your role, you get a lunch or something, you're attending, you don't need to worry. And that's what the attorneys are here, if there's any question to answer that. But what I'm going to skip over to is the conflict of interest policy, which is on page 6. And the meat of it is now, when you became a new board member, you filled out a application for being a board. The application, we also emailed out to you. The county commissioners had discussed having board members fill out the same sheet that goes into substantial interests, like the state statute on local conflict. But they felt that that was putting a burden on board members, because you would be subject to Open Records Act, and people would have your financial information. And as board members elected, they felt that that should be held to a different standard than you. So they elected to do just the application for your board every year you would submit to my office. That is open record, it is right now. And then when we do our background check and check with you for conflicts, we're actively now looking for conflicts of interest for your agenda. So we're trying to be proactive to avoid anything to help. That doesn't take the burden away from you anymore. It just put it out there that we're actively looking. Also, we got rid of appearance of impropriety. It's very subjective. It's hard to measure. Anything can have the appearance of impropriety. What we're doing now, along with the state statute, is now having a measurable means in which to determine whether there's a conflict. So we're looking, one, do you have a substantial interest, which is defined within state statute, or what is, we say, is a pekinary interest or a financial interest in a matter, and that you derive some direct and tangible personal professional benefit. If you meet that criteria, then you have a conflict of interest. What also has changed now is you do not need, if you, if it is determined you have a conflict, you do not need to leave the room. You still are part of the quorum to count for the vote. You just are abstaining. You, that also is in the rules of order in different forms. But at this point, we had an issue with another board where there were so many conflicts, they didn't have a quorum to vote. Um, but at this point, um, we had an issue with another board where there were so many conflicts, they didn't have a quorum to vote. So that's why that provision has been left in. If you don't feel comfortable, you can leave the room. If you feel you have a conflict of interest, but we as the attorney say, hey, this isn't a conflict of interest, you can still abstain as a conflict. You, or you can just say, I'm abstaining because of the appearance and that's fine as well. Um, we will now require every April that you fill out an SSI for, no, not SSI, application. I will have it on the legal website. The legal website will have that. Um, we're in the process of uploading that now um, so that you can come in electronically, fill it in and update it every April. We keep that in our office. Um, if there is an ethic complaint or you want to make an ethic complaint, the complaint form will also be on the legal department's website so that anybody can make a complaint from there. Um, essentially, that's about it. That's the overview and I'll pause real quick. Um, and then we'll get to the bylaws and how we carried that over.
Is there any action that needs to be taken on that? Or is this more informational at this point of what's been approved by the commissioner?
Um, you have before you, I believe, an emailed, and I don't know, emailed, an acknowledgement form that you've acknowledged it just like you did the one from nineteen eighty-eight when we were getting in compliance. So if you could um, sign that form and get it back to Megan, Megan will make sure it gets to the proper place and scanned and everything. So that's all. So that brings me now to the bylaws. Um, the bylaws, um, um, I forwarded out, I highlighted in yellow. I believe this is correct, if I'm correct now, on the jurisdiction. So that will need, and I'll verify that with Sean. I know he's not here, but I didn't have a chance because we, I've been out of the meetings. Did he verify that?
I think that's correct.
Okay.
Got it as well.
So at this point, that is um, that is accurate and that is the jurisdiction we're gonna leave in the bylaws because um, if these are approved tonight, the bylaws, that will go up along with the resolution simultaneously to correct the other when the bylaws are going through to the commissioner for final approval. Um, nothing much has changed from um, your last meeting, except for the composition here. Um, I made sure I laid it out. I think this is the clause where it was brought to my attention with the jurisdiction down below and that there was some awkward language in there and clarification. So that's where the revision was made. It was easier for me to just strike it out at the bottom there and just rewrite it to be consistent with the same language used in the other zoning boards. Um, moving down to four point oh five, we talked about the code of ethics. Um, this is uh, what it's called officially now, so that's why I included that. And then it gets us to four point oh five, so four point oh six. So I added, you had the language from your last meeting. I just wanted to add the other items that were in the Board of County Commissioners code of ethics that was adopted. And I just literally carried over that obligation from the code of ethics that you as members need to complete that um, board application every April and that it's located on our website. It's the exact language um, that is in their um, board language. Uh, otherwise, as I'm scrolling down, there is on six point oh one. Um, there was a discussion about um, that you have the ability to adjust and be consistent with holiday calendars of the Board of County Commissioners and not meeting. I added that to be consistent with the other boards who have raised that issue as well. And I think you raised the issue. I just don't remember. Um, I noticed that there was a cross-site that was incorrect, so I corrected that on six point oh four. And then I want to get, pause for a minute on six point oh seven. Um, I want to correct myself. I think I said that it, the direction of the board was for um, planning and zoning commissions to have public comments. It's your choice. If you don't want to have a general, the concern that raises, just thinking, would be if somebody has um, that comes in front of you, that you may in the future be deciding their zoning permit or something along that uh, thing. That, because you're sitting in a quasi judicial, that may be the concern, but in public comments, it's one way. You're not commenting, they're just providing. I'm okay if you want that. Um, Planning Commission did leave it in the other night, and I do agree with that because they're a legislative body and they're just hearing what others. So if you don't want that, I can admit it. If you do want it, we can put it back in. It's up to you. So I'll pause to see some direction. I don't think you have many public comments, do you?
Mr. The Board, if uh, if I might, uh, Jay Leipzig, uh, Planning Department, I would, I think, in thinking about this more with the other zoning boards, I think I would recommend just removing it because every, every applicant, they're gonna comment on the, on the, the case that's before them. Um, if it's not a case before them, it's, it's probably something that's gonna go before the Planning Commission um, as well. So there's still uh, avenues to get that feedback, but I think in, in your situation as a zoning board, it would make sense to remove that. I think.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree too. And the Planning Commission, when they explained theirs, I see why theirs doing it. But this one, it's up to you. I'm, you know, I'm, I see why you would not. But it's, again, it's a, it's your choice.
Emily Coleman, so if somebody had a comment that they wanted to make in that regard, how would they submit that then?
They would uh, Commissioner, they would, Jay Leipzig, they would put it under, I assume you could, you could put it under new business. Have them make a comment.
Right. It's the chair runs the meeting, so if the chair has someone it wants to, you could always add it.
Uh, this is Fred Wingerd. I, I would agree, Jay, with your comments. Um, I think it might be more clear for people that aren't familiar with how our business works, that, you know, they have an opportunity to comment on every agenda item that we're reviewing in terms of a hearing. Um, it, it might be more clear that, you know, there is a public comment opportunity for everything we review, correct?
Yes, Commissioner, that's correct. Jay Leipzig.
So I would, I would support, you know, leaving that out. It might be more clear for those um, in terms of, you know, when they participate, when they can participate.
So with that said, if you go down to six point ten, I took out that language for public comments. So then it further, a- as to add on to the board member, I'm not sure who was just talking, to elaborate that i- in fact, this clarifies that so that they understand that they can make a comment under an agenda item. Also, the commissioners in their uh, rules of ethic, um, pardon me, the rules of order, they were concerned about applicants coming up and I, uh, and identifying um, their address, but you need to know their address to know the relevancy of their, you know, comments. If we're do- we're limiting it to comments on applications. So I would recommend adding um, address back in there because you need to know that if you're okay with leaving it off and just having city and state, it just is awkward sometimes for people to give their addresses publicly, but it's up to you. Again, if you want uh, address, we can add that.
Emily Coleman, I mean, we ask for their address, but not everybody gives it. And it's not like we come after them with pitchforks, so.
No. We were just trying to do in practice, like, you know, so that everybody's treated the same.
As a matter of um, process, do the individuals that are uh, have public opinion, do they sign in, sign up uh, a sheet prior to the meeting that provides that full address?
No, we don't require people to sign up before the meeting. Um, we have a, sorry, we don't require people to sign up before the meeting to give public comment. At the meeting, we have a paper sign-in sheet. If people choose to provide their name and address, but that is also not required, as far as I understand.
And just to clarify, um, Chairman, um, Jay Leipzig, I think a case where we have, we knew we were going to have several people speaking, for example, uh, we probably would have a signup sheet for that, just, just, but it's, but as Megan said, it would be voluntary at that point.
My comment would be just that if someone didn't want to give their full name and address, as long as they signed in with their full name and address, so we have it for the record. As opposed to if it's on Zoom and everyone in public's watching, so that's just kind of the thought process I have on it.
Emily Coleman, when they sign up for Zoom, do they have to give their address as part of that registration? We don't require them to sign up to be on Zoom either. The link is provided publicly.
You don't have it, like, restricted?
No.
It, it is not Zoom, it's Zoom webinar, I think that we.
Oh, oh, it's not a webinar. Okay. I can add it. It's not a big deal if you want.
We'll just take it as a note and, uh, we'll continue, we'll take it as a note and continue forward.
Okay, all right. Otherwise, that's all the revisions. Everything else seems to be consistent with the other zoning uh, uh, bylaws that we're bringing forward. So um, if there's no other revision or request, um, tonight I'd be asking if you would mind to take action on uh, moving this forward. Along with, with the resolution to, to correct your uh, jurisdiction.
This is Fred Wingerd. I have a question on, on four point zero one, composition qualifications. Can you explain the township trustee? Um, I'm not, i- is there one for Aubrey, one for Oxford, one for Spring Hill, and then one for Alatha? And how does that make factor into who's on the board?
So I'm gonna defer. Do you know, Megan, about that? My understanding, and maybe Jay does, is from what I recall, and this is what I was told, yes, there are um, township trustees from those particular areas, is my understanding. And Linda, even though it wasn't in your resolution, Linda had been doing it anyway. So it wasn't like we were overlooking that township. And so I don't think one of them does not have, and I'm trying to think if it's Oxford.
Alatha.
Alatha does not have a township trustee, but we were still using that location, she said. So the other areas do. And so we give an opportunity for that trustee to be on the board. If they choose not to, um, then we appoint a resident in that township. So we make sure that they jurisdictionally meet that. Um, I think what someone had brought to my attention, I don't know if it was this board or another board. Again, I'm getting confused as to who said what and which boards, but um, they were concerned we weren't timely appointing people. So let's say a new township trustee came in that we needed to make sure we're getting it, which is sixty days. Um, for some reason, there's been delay in that, but um, I think now with what we're doing and setting up and getting these boards, that should, we hope that that would not occur again. So, did that answer your question?
Is, is the township trustee, are they elected or appointed, or how does that happen?
Each township has three positions, a trustee, a treasurer, and a clerk. And those are elected, um, that go through the election cycle.
So historically, Ken, has the township trustee served on this board?
They did prior to twenty seventeen, I think is what it was. Um, and Aubrey Township's trustee has served on this board before. Um, but yes, historically, they have participated.
But right now.
I brought up, it was actually the topic I brought up last, at the last meeting.
And that was about the proportional representation of each geography, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And that, the fact that the, each of those individuals are elected by the residents of that community to serve and represent that community, which would make sense why they're there. But I, I agree, I'm not sure about the Alatha, but Oxford, Ox- Aubrey and Oxford and Spring Hill, um, each have three elected officials.
Okay, but on our current board, they're not being represented. They just opted not to be on evidently?
Um, they've not, it was not something that they were presented with as an option to participate.
Oh, well, we need to correct that. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Because they should have been.
That, that's why I was asking the question, yeah, okay.
I didn't understand that, your question and concern. So that is a problem. And I need to follow up with that. Thank you.
Emily Coleman, um, so we, the board is limited to seven members. And then if the trustee elects to participate in the board, but there's, that seat is already filled, then what uh, is the process?
So at this point, that is, you know, and I don't want to concern people, but that is a legal issue, whether they qualify um, for the board at this time. And whether that is a vacancy under your bylaws that we need to go back and um, assess the situation, or do we wait till their term expires and make sure we appropriately uh, place it? But I need to check with Linda to confirm that, um, what the situation would be because she's the one who had um, provided me that information of how she was doing it. So if that's not accurate, we need to follow up on it. Thank you.
And Fred, for clarification, Aubrey Township's is Brad Miller. Oxford Township is Peter um, Pearson. And then Spring Hill Township is Ed Schleschman.
And they're not trustees, correct?
Those are the trustees.
They are trustees?
Yeah, those are.
Okay, then we're fine.
Trustees.
Oh, then we're fine.
But they're not on this board. Commissioner, uh, Jay Leipzig, I do think, I'll up on Peg's comment. Yes, I think we need to do some further research on this. I appreciate that information, Ken, because that, that's very helpful. I think we need to do some further research and bring this back to you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, do we want to uh, hold off with the bylaws being adopted until I've had an opportunity to investigate that then?
Yes, and I'd also like, we've got three members that aren't on the board, so this would actually give them time to also review their red line edits um, to provide input, since this is kind of an important topic.
Okay.
For moving forward.
Okay.
While we have a quorum, I still would prefer to get their input prior to moving forward.
Understood.
And does Alatha actually fall within the jurisdiction? I guess you backed that out, but I didn't think it did. Commissioner, I, it, it does, but a very small part of it.
Okay.
It said a part of Alatha lying south of one forty-third. And then the other town, the other board says the other half.
Which is the majority of it.
Right. Correct.
Didn't they just have all of it? Just kind of curious, okay.
So that's all I have for tonight. Um, nothing else to report out. If there's any other questions that you need me to follow up, but I think you gave me a good project to work on now um, on this other issue, and we're gonna have to render a written legal opinion on that. My, my uh, s- my opinion right now is that um, um, we are not in compliance and that that needs to be rectified and uh, we will need to appoint and ask the trustees if they're interested. If they decline, then I think we're fine. But if they don't decline, then we need to explain to them the situation.
Commissioner, Clingan Smith, this is uh, uh, Jay Leipzig, didn't, Ed Schleschman was a member of this board up until is it, I, it was after twenty seventeen, if I recall.
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
He had been. He, he was previously the treasurer of the township of, the, um, Spring Hill Township.
We're gonna get in compliance, one way or another, these boards. We're trying. And I apologize that that's, it's come to this, that we're finding this i- in an open meeting, so we'll, we'll, now I understand what your concerns were. Thank you.
Uh, this is Fred Wingerd. Can I ask another question? Is, is it possible? Does the board have to be seven members? Um, can it be expanded?
Um, I think the zoning board statute, um, Bob or Ryan, who are on the line, state statute, didn't it give a, a number at the top end, and it was seven for zoning? If you know. I'm throwing a lifeline. Are they there?
Hey, I, I don't know if, I don't know if you folks can hear me. Uh.
We can.
We can.
Uh, yeah, the, the statute gives a range and by resolution, uh, we've picked a number.
What's the, what's the head, what's the uh, high-end number by the statute for zoning boards?
I'm not gonna guess.
Okay.
I'd have to guess. And, you know, I, I thought it was. I'd have to guess, and, you know, I thought it was five to nine, but I don't have it in front of me, and, like, but we've picked the number in our resolution, and we can adjust it if we want, up to a certain number.
We need to set the number in resolution, it's improper in a resolution to give a range, you've got to know what your quorum is, so we need to pick a number. So is this something that you want, I'll report back to you at your next meeting, statutory, what the range is, and report back to you. And if that's the case, yes, we could go to nine, if that's what you're recommending. I, I don't know if we have, if that's permitted. I thought the top end was seven, but I could be wrong. And if that's the case, then we need to make sure that we're able to appoint people to the boards, we need to have available people that have an interest.
This is Fred Wingard. I wasn't necessarily suggesting we expand the board, but it might be a, you know, one way to correct this, if additional people need to be added in the interim, and as we have resignations, maybe we go back to seven, would be one thought.
Okay, outstanding suggestion, and we could put in the resolution that, that it go back, in other words, if we, if we have the legal ability, and that we go back to seven, but we would have to put that in the resolution. So thank you, we'll look into that. I do have the briefing sheet, doesn't the briefing sheet say? Where is the resolution? Because it was in there. What's it say? You scroll down. Oh. Because it put the range, if I recall. Seven, yeah, top number seven. I'm pretty sure yours did say seven, so the other boards did ranges, yours did it correctly, so I'm wrong. So it's seven, and I think that's accurate of the high number. But we'll confirm that. So that's all I have. Is there any other items you need me to follow up for your next meeting?
Hearing none, I'm going to say no.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, without, there's no other new business or other old business on the agenda, any other conversation or discussion among the board? Fred?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
If not, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Emily Coleman, I motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, meeting's adjourned, thank you.